Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Senior Pastor Justin Erickson is here with us from the Harvest Bible Chapel of Fountain Hills.
Great. Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we thank you for the specific leaders that you have entrusted with the stewardship of Fountain Hills tonight. And we thank you that you have appointed them for this role and equipped them for the task and raised them up for such a time as this. And in your word, you tell us that we are to pray for them and to submit ourselves to them as those who are in authority over us. And so we want to come and ask that you would pour out on them the wisdom like what you gave to Solomon, to discern what is right and wrong and fair in your eyes, that you would provide them with the uncompromising integrity of Daniel, who relied upon a wisdom that was beyond his own, and the courage of Joshua, who guided the people forward without fear and with your word, and the faith of Joseph, who trusted the unseen hand of providence to guide all things to their perfect end, your end, and the humility of Christ, who loved us and gave himself up for us so that he might bring us to you. May what these leaders approve be what you would approve. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Justin. Roll call, please, Beth. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember Leger?
Here.
Thank you. Start off with my mayor's report for today. I want to thank everyone who participated in Make a Difference Day. Once again, what a great showing from our community, neighbor helping neighbor. We'll be having a presentation shortly with more information on that day. But I wanted to make sure that I thank my mayor's youth council for getting up at 7:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning to help. We had a big project to do, and it turns out great with the help of my husband, Senator-elect John Kavanaugh, and Councilwoman Cecil Yates, who's really good at taking down trees while standing on a pickup truck. Let's see, I attended and had a booth at our Halloween in the Hills, another big success for our town that partners with Sammy Fine Jewelry, the business that brings us this event each year. Thank you to all the organizations, churches, schools, businesses, and the town staff that made this Halloween a safe trick-or-treating for our kids. Special thanks to Stephanie from Sammy's and her staff who organized the entire event for us. Two of our churches in town, the Anglican Church of the Atonement and Christ Church, saw that our town was lacking a pumpkin patch. Both churches put on some fun activities, and I want to thank them for adding this amenity for our kids. The police were busy last Saturday, spending their morning greeting residents and discussing issues with them. Captain Dave Loturno and MCSO deputies sponsored Coffee with a Cop that was held at Mountain View Coffee. I attended the event and spoke with many residents who were quite pleased with the opportunity to get to know our deputies. I want to thank Susan and the staff of Mountain View Coffee for making this event possible. From Coffee with a Cop, I stopped at the American Legion for their event Safety Day. Sheriff Arpaio was there with his deputies. Chief Randy Roberts was there with the fire crew and lots of fire trucks. Everybody loves a fire truck. Another great weekend event here in town. Another great milestone here was the Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church celebrated their 40th year as a congregation. I was honored to read our town proclamation at the event and share in their fellowship on Sunday morning. On behalf of the town and the town council, I want to extend best wishes to President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce Frank Ferrara, who has recently retired. Frank was responsible for the many partnerships created between the town and the chamber to promote tourism and economic development, to create a business-friendly environment, and help our business community grow. Good luck, Frank, from all of us, and enjoy your retirement. I want to welcome our new CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Scott Soldat Valenzuela. And finally, with a very sad heart, we said goodbye to Judy Confer, the longtime director of our River of Time Museum. Judy was a driving force to preserving the history of Fountain Hills and the Yavapai Nation. She will be greatly missed, but her legacy work will live on for generations to come in our museum. Thank you. I would like to recognize Vice Mayor Cecil Yates for his appointment to the Maricopa Association of Governments Regional Domestic Violence Council. Cecil, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to thank you and the council for letting me serve on this position. Domestic violence, as many of us know, it's a pretty big issue. It's near and dear to my heart because I'm a commercial real estate developer, as many of you know. And one of the buildings I manage is the Home for De Caloris, which is a local domestic violence program. It's amazing to see the work that's done over there and the need for this type of program. And so I'm just honored to be part of this and going to continue the good work that Councilwoman Dickey did by reporting what's going on with MAG in this regard and to help promote general knowledge and information about this and what we can do to hopefully stop it and promote or help the people who need it. So, thank you, mayor.
All right. Thank you for volunteering to be on that committee. All right, now I'm going to read a proclamation, November 2014, as McDowell Mountain Month. Whereas the preservation of the McDowell Mountains and the Sonoran Desert has been established as a high priority of the town of Fountain Hills and its citizens, and whereas it is the desire of the town of Fountain Hills to celebrate the unique environment of its preserve, and whereas it is also the intent of the town of Fountain Hills to raise awareness regarding the need to preserve these valuable treasures for future generations, and whereas the first permanent access trail to the preserve has been completed that links the McDowell Mountain Regional Park Dixie Mine Trail to the preserve's northern boundary via the Sonoran Trail. Now, therefore, I lend to Mayor Kavanaugh, mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, to hereby declare the month of November 2014 as McDowell Mountain Month in Fountain Hills and call upon all citizens to take a moment during the month to appreciate the beauty of this community treasure. Okay, now we will go on to... Who's next? That is Ken, right? We're on Make a Difference Day. Ken, did you want to start with that? Or did you have something to say previously? Or do you want to just... Okay, we're going to come down for a recognition of those who participated in Make a Difference Day.
Thank you, mayor. The town recently held its sixth annual Make a Difference Day where elderly and frail town residents in need of assistance with household tasks, cleanup, landscaping, maintenance, wheelchair ramps, painting, and many other projects were provided help that was carried out by just under 300 Fountain Hills volunteers. It was truly a morning of neighbor helping neighbor, which is one of the reasons that Fountain Hills is such a terrific place to live, where people care and look after one another. I was honored, as the mayor mentioned earlier, to work on one of our residents' home who had, quite frankly, a brain tumor and couldn't care for their yard. And myself, and as the mayor pointed out, a group and the mayor's council, youth council, were able to get in and out of there in just under three hours. And so it was an honor to work there.
Tonight, we'd like to recognize and publicly thank the following businesses who donated their services and merchandise to the Make a Difference Day. Many of them cannot attend this evening. One happens to be in the hospital. Three of them cannot leave work. But those who are able to be here, we celebrate your kindness and generosity in making a big difference in our community. And as we call your name, we'd like to ask you to come up to accept your certificate and to stay up here with us for a picture. Noon Kwanis? Is someone here for Noon Kwanis? Asco. Kelly Pfeiffer? Are you here? These are working people. Anyone here from Republic Services? Even if they're not here, all these businesses that are in town, we hope that you will make an effort to use these people because they did give a great deal of their time and services to us on that day. Fountain Hills Cleaning Service, Mark Harness. Artistic Land Management. And Maria Van Bokel? Starbucks? Hey, Maria's here.
Who's going to set them down? And the winner is Four Peaks Rotary. Anytime Fitness Team. We should all be jumping up for that one. Premier Landscaping, Sandy. Paul's Hardware. That's my home away from home. Roman Empire, Tim Romans. Father and Son LLC, Randy Becklin. And the Home Depot. Anyone here from... That's my other home away from home. And the community homeowners who participated are very grateful to each of you who present, as well as those unable to be here. We thank you very much for everyone's participation.
Lastly, we'd like to acknowledge the commitment and planning that goes into many details in the event by recognizing the Make a Difference Day Planning Committee that spent many hours, volunteer hours, in the past several months, putting this... the prospective projects, talking with homeowners, finding professional vendors, locating the tools and supplies, and coordinating the projects during that morning. So, as we call you, will the planning committee that are here tonight, please come forward as I introduce you? Nita Blow. Maureen Gerson. Sandy Larson. Ken Thornton. Paul Appleburn. Our unsung hero, he's the one who put it all together for us. Bryce Baldwin. Joe Nelson. Sherman Abrahamson. Steve Burgesson. Karen Downey. Lisa Kern. Nan Norton. And Mike Chikarone. I want to thank, on behalf of the mayor and council and staff of the town for this... the planning committee, as well as the volunteers, for making our community stronger through the Make a Difference Day. Thank you.
Don't worry about me. Get everybody else.
I don't have everybody else.
All right, there's everybody.
Thank you all.
Okay, let's see. Presentation of the Town of Fountain Hills Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Associated Reports for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2014, by Dennis Osich, CPA principal, with Clifton Larson Allen.
Mayor Kavanaugh, all members of the council. Arizona Revised Statute Title 28 requires cities and towns to conduct an annual financial audit. You have that financial audit in your packet for tonight's meeting. Again, you have... We have Mr. Osich here tonight from the accounting firm of Clifton Larson Allen to present to you the audit.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, mayor and council. I'm going to go ahead and make this brief. So, we were contracted. We did the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014. As part of that audit, we audited the financial statements themselves. And then, to go along with that, we also issued an examination report on the annual expenditure limitation report, an examination report on the use of highway user revenue funds. And then we also issued our report on internal controls. And then you'll also see a letter to governance basically describing the purpose of the audit, what our responsibilities were, as well as what management and governance's responsibilities are as well. And so that's included in that report. And then also, every three years, the court is required to have... They call it an audit, but it's an agreed-upon procedures in which we perform certain procedures that are dictated by the Arizona Supreme Court. And we issue that report as well. So you've got a copy of that in there as well. The purpose of the audit, obviously, is to issue an opinion on the financial statements themselves. We issued an unmodified opinion, which you're probably used to hearing "unqualified opinion," but the new terminology is "unmodified," which means that the financial statements were in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of that audit, we do give an opinion on the financial statements, and then we report on internal controls. So if we found any type of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, those would be reported to governance. So just to explain what those are, controlled deficiency would be any type of deficiency in internal controls that we felt there could be some improvement, where a misstatement could occur. Generally, if we have just a controlled deficiency, those would be reported in a management letter. And that would go to management. And then if we had any type of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, that report would be provided to governance. Significant deficiency is more significant than a controlled deficiency, but it's not as... It's not as... It wouldn't go to the extent of a material weakness. Significant deficiency is basically a controlled deficiency that did not result in a material misstatement of the financial statements, or in our opinion, wouldn't result in a material misstatement. But we felt was important enough to bring to your attention. And then a material weakness would be an item that either resulted in a material misstatement in the financial statements that had to be corrected as part of the audit, or we felt was significant enough that, if gone uncorrected, could have caused a material weakness. We did not have any material weaknesses that we reported. We had one significant deficiency, and that's included in the reports that you have in front of you. And then, as I mentioned, we also, as part of the audit... The audit itself is actually done on a risk-based approach. And so when we do the audit, we gain an understanding of the town and their operations, as well as the internal controls that are there. And then the field work that we do, the test work that we do, is generally based on a risk-based approach, which means that the higher-risk areas, which would generally be areas such as cash, revenue, or other areas where we might identify related to... Because of internal controls, are the areas that we would look at more closely or that we would do more detailed test work on, which doesn't mean that we don't test other areas, but our focus is more on some of those higher-risk areas. In addition to that, as part of the audit, we also do a rotation of audit procedures so that we look at areas that we haven't looked at in the past or we perform procedures we haven't done in the past, as well as what we call surprise procedures, procedures that we don't let management know about prior to us coming out in the field. And then we perform test work on that. We rotate those procedures each year. Again, we issued the annual expenditure limitation report. We do issue an opinion on that. We issued an unmodified opinion on that, or, excuse me, unqualified opinion because that's an examination report. So we issued an unqualified opinion on the annual expenditure limitation report. The town was in compliance with their expenditure limit amount. And then the HERF report, which is the Highway User Revenue Report, we test a sample of payroll and accounts payable disbursements to determine whether those funds are used in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes. And based on the sample that we selected, we were able to issue a clean opinion on that as well, with no findings. And then finally, the court, the triannual audit that's done, it's the agreed-upon procedures. We had one finding that we noted, that we included in that report as well. So at this point, I just wanted to make it brief. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? All right. Thank you, Ms. Osich.
Thank you. And before I go, I just want to give a big thanks to Craig. You know, it was his sort of first year going through, but officially first year going through it. And I think the audit went really well. And we appreciate his support and the support from his staff as well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Here comes. Recognition of Finance Director Craig Rodolphy, CPA, CPFO, CGFM, who received the certificate of recognition from the Government Finance Officers Association for its annual budget preparation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and the Town of Fountain Hills 13th Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
Mayor Kavanaugh, all members of the council. I'd like to ask Craig Rodolphy to come to the podium, please. Craig's been with us for a while, as you all know. He volunteered his services, and we totally utilized him as a full-time person. And then, when the transition occurred, I seized the opportunity and brought him on as full-time. And he's been valuable to us. The Town of Fountain Hills, again, was awarded, for the 13th time, by the way, for a Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for meeting its program criteria on a policy document as an operations guide and as a financial plan, as well as a communication device. And the award, when granted, is a certificate of recognition to the individual and department designated as being primarily responsible for achieving the award. So actually, the certificate of recognition goes to Mr. Craig Rodolphy, our finance director. So tonight, please, council and those with us attending tonight, recognize Craig and his department for yet another good job in budget presentation and budget documents.
Congratulations, Craig.
I told him I wouldn't embarrass him too much tonight. I promised him.
Does anybody have anything you want to say to embarrass Craig?
I'd like to hear Craig make a speech. This will be a first.
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, this would be a first. And no, I have nothing more to say than thank you.
All right, now go to call to the public. Do we have speaker cards?
Yes, mayor, we do. We have 40 speaker cards submitted of those who do not wish to speak. Thirty-nine of those cards are Fountain Hills residents. They want the council to know that they support addressing non-discrimination. We have 13 speaker cards. Sherman Abrahamson, followed by Nelson Mendoza.
And just a reminder to everyone, as you come to speak, just say your name and the town that you're from. Do not give your street address.
My name is Sherman Abrahamson, as you all have heard earlier. I am from Fountain Hills. My primary purpose for being here this evening is to echo a sentiment that we want placement of the non-discrimination policy on future agenda for discussion and action. My part... Part of my reasoning for this is, in the various functions that I've had the opportunity to participate in on behalf of the town in my volunteer work, one of the ongoing facets is, what can we do to bring more people and businesses to our town? And my sense is that by saying we don't want to have this policy, we're putting a roadblock up to some people. I don't see a need for us to create more roadblocks for any other reason, just to say we don't like it. It's time that we did something positive and take away that impediment so that people don't have to think about whether there's going to be any kind of discriminations against them coming into this community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sherman. I know you're all excited, but we'd rather you didn't clap, okay? Just clap inside, not outside.
Nelson Mendoza, followed by Alice Brovan.
Honorable mayor and council, my name is Nelson Mendoza, and I'm from the city of Phoenix. I am the Director of Public Affairs for One Community, a member-based coalition of businesses, organizations, and individuals who support diversity, inclusion, and equality for all Arizonans. In 2013, One Community launched the Unity Pledge. It is a public proclamation supporting equality for all Arizona employees, residents, and consumers. To date, over 1,100 businesses and organizations with more than 500,000 employees in the state of Arizona have signed the pledge. We're here tonight to ask the council's consideration of placing a non-discrimination ordinance on a future agenda and to offer our assistance as a resource to the council, the community, and to the businesses of Fountain Hills. With our partners at the Human Rights Campaign, we can provide assistance with questions around language, implementation, and impact that may arise when the town of Fountain Hills considers enacting a non-discrimination ordinance. Currently, four Arizona cities have adopted LGBT-inclusive non-discrimination ordinances, Phoenix, Flagstaff, Tempe, and Tucson. There are multiple reasons to consider an LGBT non-discrimination ordinance in the town of Fountain Hills. It is good for business. It is good for the economic development and sustainability of Fountain Hills. A fully inclusive non-discrimination ordinance will help the town of Fountain Hills attract new businesses and attract and retain top talent, which will work and live in the town of Fountain Hills. From a tourism standpoint, adopting a fully inclusive and non-discrimination ordinance will show visitors and our nation that the town of Fountain Hills is open for business to everyone. It'll promote goodwill, commerce, and positive brand awareness for Fountain Hills. Tonight, it is our hope that you will move forward with placing a non-discrimination ordinance on a future agenda for consideration. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alice Brovan, and then followed by Evelyn Munn.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Alice Brovan, and I'm a Fountain Hills citizen. The inclusion of a non-discrimination policy discussion is of great importance to me as a Fountain Hills resident and as an American. I want to be feeling proud of my community for establishing the guidelines that bring about absolute honor and respect for all people. This is such a fundamental principle of our nation and one that needs to be reaffirmed by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
Ann Schwers will be after Evelyn Munn.
I'm sorry, who is it?
Ann Schwers?
Ann Schwers.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Evelyn Munn. I live in Fountain Hills. I actually didn't know that this was going to be an agenda item, so perhaps more people in the community who feel and know that we already have laws on the books that protect against discrimination would show up tonight. So I must congratulate Councilmember Dickey once again for being able to bring out as many people who agree with anti-discrimination. I mean, don't we all? I mean, is that not a buzzword that goes all over and does not get people out so that we cannot discriminate? Look at me, I have white hair. I'm an older woman. I get discriminated against, even among my own family members. Isn't that amazing? my own family members, isn't that amazing? What do I do? I get up and I move on. I would suggest to people who feel discriminated against, that they think about it next time they call the police, do the police look them up first and say, "Gee, I'm not going to go to your house because you're gay, or lesbian, or transgender, or whatever you are." No, we are treated equally under the law. The same thing when it comes to the fire department, do they check you out before they come to your house? And all the other services that are provided to citizens. It is under the Constitution that all men are created equal, and I still believe that. We are working on it, yes, but I can tell you, discrimination is sort of a buzzword that no one really can describe what it means. So, I ask you not to put this on the agenda, I don't think it's necessary, I think you have all the reasons why it is not necessary under the law, and there are bigger issues we should work on. For example, we should work on the issues of being human beings, equal human beings.
All right, thank you.
Ann Schwers, followed by Martha Iskin.
My name is Ann Schwers, and I live in Fountain Hills, and I don't know what I'm doing up here, because this is my first time doing something like this, but I feel so strongly about it. I'd like to start off with saying, it is not protected. This is the only class that isn't protected in the Civil Rights Act and so forth, everything but sexual orientation, so it is not. Unless the cities and towns and states do it, it doesn't get done. So, and I'd just like to say, I grew up in Kentucky, and I grew up, I have to admit, I didn't know that I knew any gay, lesbian, transgender people, and if I thought about it, I probably thought, ew, you know, that's weird. But, I grew up and went to Wisconsin, met my husband, we lived there for thirty-four years, still didn't really know any gay, lesbian people, and moved out here, and our neighbor across the street was a lovely lesbian lady with a young child. First of all, her child went to a religious school, and she was soon told that her mother was going to hell. So, that was my first encounter with the problems that they experienced, and then she invited my husband and I to go to her church that she was starting to go to, and we drove forty-five minutes, one way, so it took a long time, down to Asbury United Methodist, down in the Avenue side of Indian School, and met so many, so many, gay, lesbian, transgender people, families with children, and we heard their stories, which were tragic, about growing up as children, and discovering their feelings, and trying to fight with those feelings, and trying to make themselves fit in, some even going, you know, getting married, trying to really fit in. And one man told about being put in an institution to try to fix him, and they had self-loathing, they had, they were bullied, you know, Matthew Shepard was killed, just because they didn't like that he was gay. I'm getting off track now, but it's, there is no way a person chooses to be gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual, et cetera, because of all they have to go through, they're just owned by their families. So many of the adults that we became friends with have no contact with their families, they've totally been disowned, disowned by their churches, usually. We went, took that long drive to go to Asbury for probably about twelve years, because we felt it was so important to support the inclusion of these people. And anyway, now we go to the fountains, because we have a pastor there who is very inclusive and so forth, so I just really would impress on you that we should have equal treatment under the law for all people.
Thank you, Ann, you did great for your first time.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Martha Iskian, I live in Fountain Hills, I'm a resident of Fountain Hills. What bliss it would be to live in Fountain Hills if we only could and would be tolerant of each other's views, race, politics, religion, gender identity, but above all, to respect and live with each other as we're all born, equal in God's eyes. Thank you, council members, who took the time to respond to my email a few weeks ago, or spoke to me personally on the phone, asking you to put the non-discrimination ordinance on council's agenda for discussion. I asked a lovely Fountain Hills resident the other day what she likes about Fountain Hills. She said, "We are a lovely town, and we are pet-friendly." Yep! Now, I love pets, but I would have preferred for her to have answered me that we are people-friendly, and that we give all human beings the same respect and rights as our I am particularly concerned, because I come from a country the size of Rhode Island in Connecticut, with sixteen million inhabitants, from at least one hundred nationalities, and we're all treated equally. Why can we not accomplish this in a small town of twenty-two thousand residents? I appeal to your duty as elected officials to listen and respond to Fountain Hills residents who have voted you to represent all of us. Please put the non-discrimination ordinance on the November twentieth agenda, so we can all go home and feel that you have listened to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Judith Johnson, followed by Larry Spade.
Johnstone, and I live in Fountain Hills. This is my first time too, and I am a little nervous, however, I think about our national hymn and the words in it, "Freedom's Holy Light," and I think most of us, really, most of us, live in freedom's holy light without even thinking about it, we just take it for granted, like a fish in water. But there are some of us who don't feel that holy light so well or so strongly as the rest of us do, and this is why we need to take special care, to make sure that they are treated equally in every way in our society. Now, other cities and towns in our state have taken this move, and I think we really should join them. It's a matter of conscience, it's a matter of morality, and it's a matter of American values, so please, put the anti-discrimination ordinance on your agenda and vote positively for it. Thank you.
Larry Spade, followed by Lena Belliner.
Council members, I am Larry Spade, I've lived in Fountain Hills for eighteen years. The Fountain Hills Unified School District has a policy that addresses harassment, bullying, hazing, threats of harm. It addresses exposure to social exclusion or ostracism. It states, harassment is intentional behavior by a student or group of students that is disturbing or threatening to another student or group of students. It continues to tell us that it includes, but is not limited to, stalking, hazing, social exclusion, name-calling, unwanted physical contact, unwelcome verbal or written comments, photographs, or graphics. Harassment may be related, but not limited to, race, religious orientation, sexual preference, cultural background, economic status, or personal appearance. Their policy also provides for a systematic method of investigating these issues related to the policy. We, the community of Fountain Hills, requires that this policy be followed by the students and the teachers. I believe that we, members, adults of this community, should be held to at least the same standard that we hold our children to. It is an ordinance that tells our community and those outside of Fountain Hills that we support equality for all individuals, and ordinance would be a step forward in doing this. Please place the non-discrimination ordinance on the town council agenda for future discussion. Thank you.
Lena Belliner, followed by Susan Fallon.
Good evening, everyone, I'm just going to change the subject a little bit. Mayor, Vince and I just want to extend our congratulations to you and your husband, Senator-Elect John Kavanaugh, what a great victory, and both of you bring great honor to this community, and you epitomize what public service is all about, and we thank you as a family living here. I also want to congratulate Edith Stock and Judith Rakowski for their successful campaign for the Fountain Hills Unified School District, and we're confident that they will bring sanity and honor to that board as well. I do have a question regarding the possibility of obtaining some sort of public report with respect to EPCorps Corporation. I know that there have been a tremendous amount of concerns and complaints, and we'd like to know what the status is with resolving the hundreds of issues that residents have been having problems with EPCorps with respect to the usage volumes, these spikes in their usages, so I'd like to know if we can possibly do that. Also, recently, I'm familiar with the failures of the smart meters and digital meters, but I was unfamiliar with the fact that they posed a very serious fire and health hazard, and I did a little research after a friend sent me a link, and I was just amazed at the issues that they are causing all across the country and into even Canada. It's amazing, so, I'd like to know, is there any possibility that we can have our town look into what effects those smart meters have on our community, what health risks they might pose, and fire dangers to our community? Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thanks for the compliment.
Susan Fallon, followed by Reverend David Felton.
Good evening, my name is Susan Fallon McCann, and my husband and I have been residents of Fountain Hills for fourteen years. We are very supportive of any initiative that we believe could benefit our community, and I'm here, along with my fellow speakers, to urge the council to place on the agenda the discussion of a non-discrimination ordinance. Some of the points that I was going to raise have already been very eloquently raised, so I'll confine my comments to just two areas. One of them is really the identity, or the reputation, or the branding, if you will, of our town. I think that Fountain Hills presents itself as a town that is very warm, very inclusive, very open. By discussing and then passing a non-discrimination ordinance, we would simply be underscoring that. I think it would actually strengthen the reputation of this town, and I do concur that it would go a long ways, in my opinion, to attracting more visitors to our town, which could have economic benefit, more individuals to our town. This is a town that, quite frankly, is not very diverse, you have only to look at the demographics to see that, and diversity can bring a richness, both in terms of the culture and the social fabric, and the economic growth of the town. I will tell you that LGBT residents of this town, who I have had discussions with, frequently feel they have to live undercover, they're afraid of losing their jobs, discrimination exists. The other issue I'd like to point out is that while I greatly appreciated the quick response from Mayor Kavanaugh to my letter and the letter of my husband presenting this issue, what I was troubled by is the feedback that we should wait for the state. I fail to understand the logic in that. Arizona is not known as a state that emphasizes non-discrimination. Sadly, quite the opposite is true. The ban on same-sex marriage that was only recently overruled, SB 1062, which was passed in the legislature, and fortunately, because of public outcry on not only a local and a regional, but a national and international level, the governor wisely vetoed it, and this is the bill that would, of course, allow discrimination, particularly against LGBT members based on religious privilege. So, I believe it's a fact that we need to face, that waiting for the state is not a legitimate reason not to consider non-discrimination in our own community, and I would love for all of us to be able to look back in ten years with great pride, along with the other municipalities that are not waiting for the state, and to see that we move forward in a way that could benefit the people who live in our community, the people who visit our community, and the businesses in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Reverend David Felton, followed by Alan Magazine.
Mayor, council, I'm Reverend David Felton from the Fountains United Methodist. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know by reminding you that the tradition from which I come from...
Can I just ask you to state where you live?
What's that?
We have to know the town you live in.
I live in Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay, thanks, go ahead.
And even in Phoenix, we know that my tradition advocates for all of us who participate in that tradition, to be advocates for the least among us, for the last among us, and to be the voice of the widow, and the orphan, and the immigrant among us, basically those who are all in a position to be discriminated against. And so, this is not just a civic issue that has to do with treating all of our citizens equally as the Constitution demands, but it's also a religious issue that calls us to recognize the foundational principles of our Judeo-Christian heritage in making sure that all of us who participate in that tradition treat every human being, no matter who they are, with dignity and respect, especially those who are voiceless, especially those who are not part of the majority. So, I would advocate that you would consider putting the non-discrimination ordinance on the agenda for discussion, and then support it with your yes vote. And if I could just take a moment and recognize a couple of celebrities here tonight that are part of what I've worked on for over twenty years in my ministry, which is bringing to bear equal rights for all people, and that would be Nelda Majors and Karen Bailey, who are here in the front row, they were the very first couple to receive their marriage license in Maricopa County when the ban was lifted just a few weeks ago, so... They are members of the Fountains United Methodist Church, and they've only been together for fifty-seven years. Thanks.
Mayor, the last speaker is Carol Camito.
Alan who?
Mayor, council, I'm Alan Magazine, I live in Fountain Hills.
I hope so.
You know, when I heard that Councilwoman Dickey was going to raise this issue, I immediately said, "Why? What is the purpose? It can only be controversial and divisive." And I certainly didn't want it to be on the agenda and held over to after December 4th, when I'm sitting where you are. But then I gave it some serious thought, and what I concluded was that avoiding controversy was not my definition of leadership, that sometimes we have to take on the tough issues. It isn't easy, but it has to be done, especially when a significant portion of the citizenry want to be able to speak out about an issue, and hear the council talk about an issue. I think it should be an agenda item, I think there should be full discussion. I'm also concerned about bad publicity, we've had enough in this town, and an unwillingness to even discuss issues invites more negative connotation for Fountain Hills, which we cannot afford. Honestly, I don't know how I'd vote, because it would depend upon the wording of a motion, it would depend upon information, facts from council, town manager, I think these are all things that the council and the public need to hear about. I have concerns about economic development, until recently, as you know, I was chairman of the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. We... We put forward an economic development plan, an implementation plan, which you folks adopted unanimously, and others have spoken to this. I'm a little concerned about our reputation and our ability to get businesses to move here and to increase our population, both of which are absolutely critical to stabilizing our financial situation. Finally, the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, as you know, held numerous public hearings, met with a lot of people, had an online poll to come up with a strategic plan in 2010. This was drafted by SPAC. It was unanimously approved by SPAC. It was passed on to you with a fairly comprehensive presentation, and as a result, it was adopted unanimously by the council. And interestingly enough, there were eight values that came out of our meetings with all of the citizens. And the very first one... If I can find it.
Civility.
Is civility. And I want to read just a couple of sentences from that. It's fine. I had a paperclip here, and it fell out. Bear with me, mayor. I'll just be a second. It says, "Our community is one that values kindness, and we should strive to celebrate and build from our differences instead of finding ways to fragment ourselves and politicize the issues facing our community." I'm not telling you you should vote for a policy without knowing what the policy is, but I do think at the very least the council should place it on the agenda and listen to the citizens. Thank you.
Mayor, the last speaker is Carol Camito.
Got to be last but not least, huh? Mayor, council members, thank you. I am Carol Camito, and I'm a resident of Fountain Hills. I've been a resident for 10 years. I'm also a former commissioner for the Public Safety Advisory Commission. I live in Fountain Hills because I want to. I love this town. I'm proud to be a resident here. I'm proud to say that I live here, and I want to continue to be proud that I live here. I think if we can put this nondiscrimination ordinance on the agenda and have a discussion about it, hopefully have a yes vote, I think our town will continue to thrive. I think we'll continue to be proud of all the things that we've done and all the things that we will do. A lot has been said tonight, so I won't repeat a lot of it. Being last, I guess it's an accumulation of everything, but I respect all of you, and I hope that you will at least consider putting this on an agenda in the future. And I do have a petition that has 134 signatures that I'll give to Bev, just to let you know that not only the people that are here tonight, but many other people who couldn't be here tonight, do support that we put this nondiscrimination ordinance on the agenda in the future. Thank you.
Mayor, we have one more speaker card. I think it was one that was listed with a phone number. We didn't have a name on it.
Okay.
DeeDee Rodolphy.
I would just respectfully like to ask you all to consider placing this important nondiscrimination amendment on your agenda to discuss so that all people in Fountain Hills can have the same opportunities and be treated very equally. Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for keeping in with the three-minute times, too. Appreciate it. All right, we'll go on to our consent agenda items. We have three to consider. Can I get a motion to approve as listed?
Somoot.
Second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember LaChee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. Our regular agenda items, number four, consideration of appointing four citizens to the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, each for a two-year term beginning November 6, 2014, and ending November 5, 2016. I move to appoint Lena Belliner, Gerald Bazilia, Peter Bordeaux, and John Kraft. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any council discussion? No? Okay. I just want to mention that Peter Bordeaux has already served on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. Peter, we're very grateful for the time that you've spent volunteering, and we appreciate you wanting to do it again. Okay? And to all of the others also. Can I get a... All in favor of these four? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for volunteering. Consideration of a special event application for the Fountain Hills Farmers Market and Art on the Avenue presented by Dutchmans Holdings and J. Yates Enterprise to be held weekly from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Thursdays along the Avenue of the Fountains median from January 8th to April 9th, 2015, with an additional market date of March 17th, 2015. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, the Farmers Home Fountain Hills Farmers Market and Art on the Avenue special event to be held weekly, as you said, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Thursdays from January 8th to April 9th, as well as an additional market date of March 17th, 2015. This would be on the median. And I, or Rachel Goodwin, the recreation supervisor, would be happy to answer any further questions the town would have regarding the planned events. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, mayor.
Any council discussion or questions for Councilman Elke?
Thank you. Ken, could you describe, since we've spent a considerable amount of money improving the median, what steps are going to be taken to protect the grass, the new sod, and everything that we have out there?
Well, when this starts, that grass should be stabilized.
There won't be any issues with the tents and that sort of thing?
No.
You know, markers as far as where the irrigation is and that sort of thing?
It was designed for a number of the special events. We met with all the groups, if you remember, recall, a number of years ago, that talked about what kind of special events would be used in the medians. This was one of them.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ken or Rachel? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mayor Somoot.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. Discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the renaming of the Avenue of the Fountains median with final name suggestions as submitted by public solicitation compiled by tourism staff. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, the town council requested staff to conduct a survey and provide public... An opportunity to provide suggested names for the medians for the avenues of the fountains. You have the various common themes from the numerous suggested names for the medians. Community service staff utilized an online Service Monkey instrument to solicit recommended naming opportunities for the medians themselves. So I open it up for any discussion from staff who collected that information or among yourselves, and try to assist you on what you want to do with this business item.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. I just wanted to open the discussion by... I've gotten quite a few emails, and people have stopped me at the various events, not so much as giving me names for the median, but asking me not to change the name. That's... I just wanted to... A recent email that I just received, I thought was pretty representative of what everybody said, so I just want to read a paragraph from it. This is from a resident. "I do not stand the reasoning for believing it is necessary to rename the avenue. Why don't we embrace the history and the name that is already there? Avenue of the Fountains is now as appropriate as ever for not only the street, but the median as well. Some of the suggestions mentioned remove the word fountain altogether. Why? Fountain Park and the fountain are the biggest symbols of Fountain Hills. The fountain is the reason for the town name. We should be embracing the fountain and anything related to it. Let's promote the name Avenue of the Fountains instead of moving away from it. If the goal is to use it for tourism, I do not see a better name." The Times article today stated that although it was an unscientific poll, 96% of the respondents said that the renaming should not occur. 96%. "While I appreciate the work the council and the entire town staff has put into this project, if 96% is a true representation of the residents, shouldn't that take priority over the desires of a few people?" So I'm just putting it out there that while we said we were going to discuss it, and I know we have a list of a lot of names, I thought we would also consider whether we really want to do this or not. I haven't heard out there from anybody that there's a real great passion for changing the name. I think if... I'm concerned that if we do change it, we're also going to upset a lot of people that don't want to change, and we're also going to upset people that don't like the name that we pick. So I'm just putting it out there that, you know, is it so vital to do this? Should we not be, as it says in this email, preserving the history and promoting Fountain Hills whenever we can with the word fountain? So I know we said that we put this on the agenda for discussion, so I just wanted to put that out there that the option is also not to change it. And I'll open that up for any discussion. Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. Just quickly, we don't know how many people actually voted in that, and it's kind of unusual to have that as part of a packet that we make decisions out of, but just looking at the names that were suggested, there were 227 responses. 18 of them said to leave it alone, so I think that's like 8% or something. But basically, if 227 people even thought enough to give us a suggestion, and we don't know if how many people did the newspaper thing, I just think that's something to kind of look at, just in case that was a lot less. We see people that actually made suggestions here. So... And just like really quickly, because this whole thing is kind of odd to me, it was like a positive thing and a fun thing, and I don't know how it became such an anger-provoking thing. So that's all I wanted to say.
Councilman Brown?
Help me, please. We aren't renaming the Avenue of the Fountain.
Right.
We're just renaming the median. And you drive down Shea Boulevard, and you've got a median that's three feet wide that's full of weeds. Now we have a median that is absolutely gorgeous, and if we're going to spend a million and a half dollars, let's not call it a median. Let's name it. Let's give a little strength to the Avenue of the Fountains, and that's what we're doing. We're not renaming the Avenue of the Fountains. We're renaming a median that is no longer a median. It is a beautiful part of Fountain Hills, and it deserves a name and a title.
Okay. Just to clarify, this letter was... He understood that it was the median. He was just saying like, you know, and in some of the other letters was, "Call it Avenue of the Fountains Park," or "Call it Avenue of the Fountains Green," or "Commons," or whatever you want to call it, but just leave it with the fountains in there.
Absolutely. I don't think anybody up here is trying to rename Avenue of the Fountains, but the plaza on the avenue is nice, something along that line, but Avenue of the Fountains is the name of the street. It's not the name of the median. And at no time have I heard anybody talk about renaming the street. It's the median.
Right. Councilman Elke?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo what Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Dickey said. I mean, this is something wonderful and nice. I mean, we've spent years... I mean, one of the things when I campaigned four and a half years ago, maybe a little bit more now, I walked along the avenue, and I talked to the business owners, just trying to, as a new guy in town, just trying to get an idea of what was important to the business owners along there, and they said, "You're going to do something with that median." And I said, "Well, that'll be a priority. We'll work on that." And I think more than one business owner along there said, "Oh, I'll believe it when I see it." Well, now we can see it, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of the council for doing that. And I agree with Councilmember Brown. We haven't talked about renaming the Avenue of the Fountains. It's still the Avenue of the Fountains. I don't want to change it, and I don't think anybody up here has ever said, "Let's change the name of the Avenue of the Fountains." We're just talking about a place that's within the Avenue of the Fountains, which is no longer a median. It's not a median. It's a plaza. And I think through some of the information that we've received through staff, that it's a place to come and to gather. "I'll meet you at the plaza, the Avenue Plaza, or Plaza..." Whatever it may be. You know, Avenue of the Fountains, yes, that's the street, and it's going to be an Avenue of the Fountains even more because of all the wonderful new fountains that I think we've all seen out there. And I think it's a very... It should be a wonderful thing, and I'm very curious how this turned into an ugly thing, too, and it's disheartening, and it's... But I guess after four and a half years on the council, it's not surprising, because it seems to be these things, it's not the big issues, but it's always these small things that stick in someone's craw, and I'm not sure why that is. But I know there are council members that want to make comments, too, so I'll sit.
Okay. Just to clarify, he was not talking about the renaming the avenue. It's the median. He wanted to make sure it stays with fountains or something like that. No, I'm not saying it's the avenue we're renaming. Councilman LaChee?
Mayor, if I may try to bring some sanity to this issue that, as my peers have stated, has gotten totally out of control. I've had a number of people approach me in a lot of different places, particularly Safeway, totally alarmed at, "Why, Councilman LaChee, would you be renaming the avenue?" And I'd basically say, "Okay, let's take your blood pressure. Calm down. We're not renaming the avenue. We're looking at possibly renaming the median." Because as we went through this process for several years and spent a sizable amount of money, which, by the way, it took us about 10 years, 1/10 of a percent of your sales tax to save up to do a project like this, to enhance our community, to follow in line with what the strategic plan said, creating a town center, creating vitality in our town, to help jumpstart the development on the south side of the avenue. So I think a number of people involved in this project basically said, "Gee, wouldn't it be nice to call it something?" Well, turning back full circle, we asked staff to come up with some recommendations. And looking at our meeting, Gracie and Rachel did a good job and came up with some recommendations, and those recommendations were Avenue of the Fountain this, and Avenue of the Fountain that, and Avenue of the Fountain that. We went out, and we received a significant amount of feedback, 218 people on the monkey survey. And, you know, that's awesome. Everyone cares. Look at the group that's here this evening. You know, we're a concerned community, and when it comes to naming something, people want all in on it. Before I make a motion, I just want to make one last comment. I will not be influenced by non-scientific surveys that are conducted in any newspaper, particularly a survey, if you do the research, and I did, and this is no offense to the Fountain Hills Times, I appreciate the fact that they're doing outreach, and they're asking for input, and they're engaging the citizens. But that particular study feedback represented about 1/10 of the percent of their subscribers in about... I take that back. It was a percentage of their subscribers in about 2/10 of a percent of the population of Fountain Hills. I spent a career in doing research, and there's two things that stand out: reliability and validity. So you have to take that information with a grain of salt. So going back to our staff, our tourism folks, they had a bunch of names: Avenue of the Fountain this, and Avenue of the Fountain that. I had the opportunity and the pleasure, our town manager took me for a stroll down the avenue. It is... I mean, down the avenue is median. It is no longer a median. It is a mall. It's a park. It's full of plazas. It's awesome, and it's going to really enhance vitality in downtown. So with that being said, I'd like to try to put this to rest and bring it to a vote, and simply make a motion that we refer to it as the Avenue of the Fountains. And mayor, I know that that was something you had recommended, and our tourism staff, and many of the people in our feedback had the word Avenue, Fountains, Plaza, on and on and on. And I know I'm being incredibly loquacious here. Avenue of the Fountains. I make a motion to rename the median Avenue of the Fountains Plaza.
Second. Discussion? Any others? Motion in a second? Any discussion? Go ahead.
Would I be out of line and ask Rachel and Gracie to come up?
Sure.
Ladies, could you? I know you didn't want to do this, but since you were the collector of...
Yeah, they did.
Put them in the fire, all right? If you could, Rachel, just kind of go over, give us, again, a recap of what Councilman LaChee said based on your recommendations and your thoughts. Again, this is kind of your areas of expertise and knowing what you're working on, branding's important, naming, the whole concept, so kind of let us know how you feel this fits into your plans.
I would agree with what Councilman LaChee said, and most of the comments that were made tonight, everyone seems to really embrace the heritage, as you mentioned, mayor, of Avenue of the Fountains. I think, as you mentioned, it isn't just a median. It's not a divider between two highways. It is a place. It is a destination. And I think whatever label, plaza is the choice of the council... And I think whatever label, plaza is the choice of the council, it is, it will be referred to as that, it will be referred to, "Meet me at the plaza, meet me at the green, meet me on the avenue, on the Avenue of the Fountains." So I think that you guys echo what we have found as well. Grace, anything, any thoughts?
No. To echo what Rachel said, you know, and to reiterate that special events happen in this area, and it, it feels natural to refer to a place of special events as something more than a median.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Rachel, or? All right, so I have a motion in a second, it sounds like we have a good compromise that maybe will make everybody happy. Can I just call for a vote then, if there's no, okay?
Oh, no, no.
I was wondering how we were going to get through 218 names. Okay, um, do you want to repeat it?
What's a call?
Sure, sure, I make a motion to rename the median the Avenue of the Fountains Plaza.
Okay, and we already have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Okay. This is a great compromise, I think everybody'd be happy with that, including this resident that wrote to me, I think he'd be very pleased that we kept Fountains in there. Thank you. That was easy. All right. Consideration of Resolution 2014-44, ordering the sale of not to exceed 8,200,000 principal amount of Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, general obligation bonds, Series 2014.
Mayor Cavill, all members of the council, again, the voters of the Town of Fountain Hills approved an eight, not to exceed $8.2 million bond for the Soro Boulevard Street improvements, and it's requested to begin the authorization of the bonds to be sold with maturity date of five, of five years. Resolution 2014-44 orders the sale not to exceed the principal amount of 8.2 million of general obligation bond, Series 2014. It's recommended, it's recommendation to approve the resolution and call for the sale of GO bonds. We have representatives from both our investment bankers, Webb Bush, as well as our bond counsel, Gus Rosenfeld, here tonight if you have any specific questions.
Any speaker cards on this item?
I'm here.
All right, council discussion? Motion, discussion, motion?
Discussion.
You have discussion?
It's just, it's just so funny that we take all that time to name the median, and we're passing 8.2 million, go ahead, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead.
Can't this be, this be done administratively?
Well, Mayor, if I may, in that we are spending 8.2, yeah, million, million dollars, as Councilman Elke alluded to, I'd like to say, it's really nice to be here, we started discussing this project many, many years ago, it's gone through a variety of elections, staff's done a tremendous job downsizing the project, being more specific, the voters were extremely supportive of it, so I'm really anxious to bring some folks up here, or not, to talk about and bring it, bring this to a vote and get this project started. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Brown?
Are we sure we don't want to just do a little crack fill and reseal the project?
No, let's make a motion here, if I can.
Absolutely.
You ready?
Who wants to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Brown? Did you want to make the motion?
Jenny.
Or Jenny did?
I, go ahead, Jenny, I'll be glad.
Don't fight over it, somebody make it.
Approved Resolution 2014-44, ordering the sale of not to exceed 8,200,000, principal amount of Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, general obligation bond, Series 2, 2014.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and no speaker cards, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Yay. All right, number eight, discussion with possible direction to staff related to legislative bulletin or related to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. Ken?
Mayor Cavill, all members of the council, I have nothing tonight, but I do want to ring at an upcoming meeting, is that the League of Cities has put out a bulletin to, and request that if any council, specific council member, I think they have seven subcommittees, and we'll bring those to the council for consideration and discussion, if, if they want to have participation from individual council members to, to help with some of the policy determinations and direction that the League wants, would like to see. So we'll bring that to the, to you in the future.
Okay, and I'll just add that we're having our first executive meeting on November 14th, so after we have that, I may have something to bring back. Anything else? All right, we're going to number nine, council discussion, direction to the town manager, the request of Councilwoman Dickey, the topic of a nondiscrimination policy has been listed on this agenda for discussion purposes for possible placement on the topic on a future agenda for discussion and possible action. Council discussion, on the discussion. Councilwoman Dickey?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll stick to the, to what I wrote down, so I don't drift too far and make Andrew get worried. But I do understand that I'm fairly limited in my remarks to the matter of whether to place a nondiscrimination ordinance on a future agenda, and not so much on the actual merits of the ordinance itself. Therefore, I'll start with the most obvious reason and relevant reason, which is, of course, the grassroots outpouring of support we saw here, not only tonight, but in emails, other contacts that we've received. I personally had over 30, though I understand not all of us have received every one of them, and, and of course, I was not free to forward them to you all. Please keep in mind that the initial request to address a nondiscrimination first came in, in February, when the state was embroiled in the 1062 debate and the ultimate veto by the, by Governor Brewer. At that time, I asked the constituency to postpone our consideration of the ordinance, and they were okay and patient with me about that. My thought at the time was that I didn't want to see something that, in my view, could be so unifying, potentially be used by both sides of the issue during our own local election, which took place in August. In my naivete, I thought that I would be able to get it on an agenda shortly after the election in September, and in fact, was scheduled for October 2nd. As you all know, and probably most people know, that a council, a single council person can't get something on an agenda, you either, the mayor has to do it, or you need to get two other council members to agree. It was ultimately unsuccessful, and I'm just telling you that so that you know how it's become this kind of an agenda item, and that's why you're seeing it this way tonight, a tool that we haven't often used, I admit that. Another reason to put the ordinance on an agenda is, is that the local municipal level is the appropriate place to enact nondiscrimination. While the federal government provides some protections against unfair treatment of certain classes, constitutional attorneys agreed during the 1062 discussions that even those protections could arguably have been in jeopardy. It is also clear that the state of Arizona will not be inclined to expand or enhance equal rights in the near future, and in fact, an editorial from September 3rd that was in the Arizona Republic specifically called on cities to take the lead. As we heard earlier, Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, and Tempe have already passed theirs, with Scottsdale in line, maybe you've all read that they voted on the unity pledge, and articles in the paper also note that Mesa and Glendale are due to consider it probably in the next month or so. Which brings me to the last point, which is that an anti-discrimination ordinance would fall in line with our economic development plan and our tourism efforts. Again, during those spring SB 1062 discussions, we saw Barry Broome of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, a variety of chamber business leaders and consultants such as Chuck Houghlin, Glenn Hamer, and Todd Sanders, and again, the newspapers encouraging a veto citing the effect on our economy and our ability to attract not only employers but visitors. The ordinance itself, and, and this was alluded to earlier also, and its implementation, including enforcement, would be determined with ample opportunities for input and review by, by the public and the council, of course, in order to customize it best for Fountain Hills. There would not be a significant budgetary increase, and as, as with any budget item, it would be weighed, as always, against the benefits. And these, we would have a lot of resources to look at that, including realistic comparisons to the other cities here and across the nation, which there are 150, actually more than 150 of them that we could possibly find relevant to our circumstances. So to sort of summarize, the three reasons I ask you to consider placing an anti-discrimination ordinance on a future agenda are, number one, the obvious support from our residents and businesses, as noted tonight, and through previous contacts; two, the evidence discussed of why it is definitely appropriate to consider this ordinance on a municipal level; and three, the potential economic publicity and tourism boost, while not cost neutral, could be implemented in a way that would have limited effect on our resources. So I appreciate you hearing that, and I hope I stayed within the, the lines of what I was able to discuss.
Any other council discussion? Councilwoman?
Mayor, if I may, I assume you're talking about a, a policy very similar to what Tempe has in place, and I have to ask, does the Town of Fountain Hills have the resources and the staff to administer or effectively enforce such a policy, and is it truly up to, up to the town to enforce such a policy? And I don't believe the Town of Fountain Hills has either the staff or the resources to administer a policy like this. Is our community welcoming, a welcoming community and open for business? You bet it is. We have been in, in business for 40 years, and we'll continue to be so, and we'll continue to be a welcoming commu, community that is open for business and people-friendly. Granted, I do not have the knowledge of the last 40 years, but I do have my knowledge of the last 19 years of living and doing business in Fountain Hills, and I have never once heard of a complaint. So with that being said, and I totally respect everything that everybody came out and the support, but I don't believe that the Town of Fountain Hills is ready for this.
Any other council discussion? Councilwoman Hanson?
A number of weeks ago, we did receive a rough draft based on Tempe that was somewhat modified, and, and I shared Dennis's concerns about the enforcement of it and how we would go about doing that. So, referring to something Alan mentioned earlier, I think what would be very important would be the content of this policy. And perhaps it might be worthwhile, too, to consider something more like the unity pledge, something where we are actually, you know, the council stands together and makes a pledge to the community and people outside the community that we do believe in equality for everyone, I mean, absolutely everybody. The gentleman that talked about the, the school policies and how they have those policies in place, it's great to have a policy in place, but unless it's enforceable and can be enforced, which sometimes falls short, that's, then it's not really effective. So however we move forward, whether it be an ordinance, or a pledge, or something, I mean, it certainly is worth the, the discussion of doing so in some form.
Any other council discussion? Councilwoman Leger?
Thank you all this evening for being here. I took copious notes, I heard everything each and every one of you stated. This is an issue I've been contemplating for six months. It's, it's an issue that engages your heart, it's an issue that engages your head, and at the end of the day, hopefully, we'll, we'll all make a balanced decision in that regard. I believe it's important to note that the town currently has a nondiscrimination policy in place, which was unanimously approved by this council on August 1st, 2013. Mayor, if I may, Andrew, am I at liberty to read this policy?
Excuse me, ma'am, Mayor, Councilmember Leger, I think it's within the bounds of, is it, it's addressing whether or not there, you need a further discussion of this topic? Is that the purpose?
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's the purpose. And based on much of what I heard this evening, particularly a gentleman that talked about a, a policy in our own unified school district, I, I came across something that we, we revised, actually, on August 1st, 2013. This council revised our, one of our policies regarding nondiscrimination, and I'd, I'd like to read that. You will listen to it, and it probably will not go a, a bridge as far as you would like to, but I would like to read it anyways. It's Policy Number 103, if anyone's interested in looking it up. It was revised July 1st, 2013, it was presented to council and approved unanimously on August 1st, 2013. The purpose of this policy, if you may, was to define the Town of Fountain Hills' position regarding nondiscrimination in all matters pertaining to employment throughout the organization. Statement of policy, the town provides equal opportunity for all applicants and employees. The town does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, gender, national origin, ancestry, marital status, sexual orientation, and I repeat, sexual orientation, age, physical or mental disability, medical conditions, or veteran status. The town also makes reasonable accommodation for disabled and for employees' religious observances and practices. This is the town's nondiscrimination policy. It is the responsibility of every employee to cooperate with the spirit and intent of this policy. The scope of the policy, scope to me is what's very important when we start comparing and looking at, as I have in reviewing, all of the ordinances that are out there, I'm not sure how many have had an opportunity to really drill down and review those. The scope of this policy applies to all applicants and employees throughout every aspect of employment, aspect of employment relationships, including but not limited to recruitment, selection, training, compensation, benefits, promotion, transfer, discipline, termination, and any social and recreational programs and interactions. That is a policy that we have, that the town, within its capability and capacity, has on the books to address nondiscrimination. One comment I'd like to make, if I may, regarding that, is that after reviewing many ordinances out there, the question for me is capability. Do we really have the reach, the resources, and the capability to implement a policy similar to Tempe, or even a watered-down version, which I've looked at, which has some of the same issues around reach? I believe, after reading this and reviewing this several times, I believe it is fair to say that this policy demonstrates a commitment to equality and inclusion by the town, and is a testament of the town's dedication to nondiscriminatory practices. Furthermore, it outlines and defines a scope that can be effectively administered by the town, effectively administered. Similarly, there are numerous businesses in Fountain Hills across a number of business sectors, if you were to do the research, and I have in the last several months, that have inclusive nondiscriminative policies and practices already in place. And those business sectors are grocery stores, pet stores, businesses that sell and rent housing, accommodations, they have their own corporate policies that they do, in fact, implement. It's part not only of their employee, if you may, policies, but it's their culture. And if you go to a large retail store in town, it has that inclusion in their policy, and it is part of the culture in terms of how they behave when they interact with customers, clients, and services. So in a nutshell, as I stated, and has been mentioned, I think, by several folks up here, the question is, do we feel that we have the resources, the reach, to effectively administer a policy of this nature? I had an opportunity to speak to a young woman who spoke this evening over the phone, and try to be responsive to, to folks that have talked to me about this issue, and she cited some examples of what she believes takes place in Fountain Hills. And there were examples of what she considered nondis, considered, excuse me, discrimination. I viewed those not necessarily as discrimination, I viewed them as, as human nature. As a matter of fact, the same example she used, I've been subject to as, as a council person, making unpopular decisions in Fountain Hills, from having my car keyed, to, well, there's a whole list of, of things that I probably don't want to get into at this particular point in time. So that makes me think about the fact that I hear what you're saying, I've read a lot of these ordinances, and, you know, she used the word ugly when she talked to me, "People treat people ugly." Well, you know what? People do treat people ugly. And people do treat... And people do treat people very beautifully. And the question I have, can municipal governance legislate attitude? And I'm not sure that we can. Can laws legislate attitude? Possibly. But we need to be able to enforce those laws. And I'm not quite sure that we are in a position today to do that for the whole community, for us to be, if you may, in the business of managing human resource policy for every employer in this town. That's the question I have. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Thank you. I won't repeat what everyone said, but obviously, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think everyone here feels the same way in the sense that we want to promote a all-inclusive, friendly, open-to-everyone community. And I just want to read some of the things that we're doing right now. We made the joke about pet-friendly, but it didn't say what kind of owner pet-friendly. It's pet-friendly to everybody, business-friendly. We don't say what kind of business. We say business-friendly. I'm quoting now, and these are some of the local magazines and entities that looked at Fountain Hills. Phoenix Magazine quoted us as "a welcome oasis on the outskirts of a metropolis." We've been named the best affordable suburb. We've been named Playful City, USA. It doesn't itemize or have subtext of what type of folks that that applies to. It's all folks. And so I just want to stress the fact that I truly do feel Fountain Hills is open to everyone. And like my fellow councilpeople and myself, I did some research. It's a fairly new topic that's been going around on local municipalities. Right now, Fayetteville, Arkansas did this just two months ago, and almost immediately, based on this type of ordinance, they had to hire a full-time person to deal with this, back to the stress on our administration. But more importantly than that, if something does happen for some reason, because people are being ugly to each other and they feel it's due to a certain reason, we do have some resources. The Arizona Department of Real Estate, you're able to make a call and make a complaint if you feel that you've been discriminated against for any number of reasons. It doesn't have to be stated. Obviously, the ACLU, any number of reasons, you can make a report. The ACLU, obviously, deals with this on an ongoing basis. I guess I would lean more towards what Councilwoman Hanson said about, you know, some general statement and all, but I truly do feel when we start segmenting certain groups, there's bound to be a group that we left out. And then I just think that's not what we're about. I think it's all-inclusive. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Dickey?
Well, Mayor, this has turned into something that, if I can respond, because I thought I really couldn't quote-unquote "go there," part of what I would want to say is that, yes, we can't legislate attitude. But what you maybe, Henry was referring to, is a reaction to, a response to an action that you took, or I took, or anything like that. This is people's essence. They haven't done anything. They're just, their existence allows them to be discriminated against. And maybe there are some companies that do say, well, we will hire, just like you just said, the town does. That is another issue. That's an employment issue, which I really appreciate that, to say, yes, we will hire. But there are hundreds or however many other businesses that can refuse service, and yes, refuse to hire, just based on sexual gender identity. You talk about those companies, and seemingly that you're praising them because they've adopted these policies. And they are smaller than us. And then, on the other hand, we want the state to do it, which is larger than us, which feels like we're figuring out a way for everybody but a municipality to do it. We don't have to do it because the companies do it. We don't have to do it because the state should do it. Twenty-one states have done it, and 150 cities have done it. So I think that, let's see, there was something else I wanted to mention, too. Gosh, I probably lost my train of thought.
Andrew, are we still okay with keeping into the discussion area? It seems like we're getting into arguments and...
Okay, I know what I was going to say. This will take me back.
Could I just get a ruling from Andrew? We're only supposed to be deciding if we're moving this along, and it sounds like we're arguing the issue. So could you clarify where we are here?
Madam Mayor, I think we're dancing around the edge of the actual text of the ordinance, which is what would be discussed in the future means. So we're still within the bounds, but it's, don't worry, I'll jump up.
Fred Lightwing?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and Andrew, because that's exactly right. The essence of the ordinance, the draft that we got, because we thought it was going to be on an agenda, is why we had a draft. And thank you to Andrew for writing that up, and it was modeled after Tempe's. But what you're doing, if you don't agree to at least discuss it, is to give yourself the information that's available that eases towns of every size into something like this in a way that is affordable and does make sense for their town. If you don't want to put it on an agenda, you'll never have the information to even decide if it's something that you want to go forward to. Like what Allen Magazine said, he doesn't know how he'd vote on it. But how would any of us know how we'll vote on it if we refuse to hear all of the options that could be available to a town like us? And it sounds like you don't even want to hear the options, even though you praise the fact that we have this on our own employee, how we employ people, or other companies that have that as a company rule. And again, creating an atmosphere that, I appreciate that. But the rule of law behind protecting all of these classes does not exist for certain people. Okay, I won't say anymore.
All right. Any other council discussion? All right. Hearing no further council discussion.
I'm going to make a motion.
All right.
I move to place consideration of a nondiscrimination policy on a future council agenda.
Is there a second?
Just to clarify, when you say it that way, so that it could be in the form of an ordinance, a policy, a pledge, just something, are you leaving it more open that way?
I'm saying yes. A nondiscrimination policy. Move to place consideration of a nondiscrimination policy on a future council agenda. I took it from the item.
Mayor, if I may, point clarification. A policy is not necessarily a pledge, and a pledge is not necessarily a policy. And I'm just clarifying the question that Councilwoman Hanson mentioned.
I think if it could be more broad, and that way, it would be addressing options, just like you were referring to, you know, discussing possible options, if it could be a little bit more broad.
Mayor, can I ask, Andrew, is policy design have to have a strict definition?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, we have a number of different things in town that are adopted as ordinances, policies, and other. So policy doesn't have a strict definition, but it certainly has a character of a document or an action that the town has typically taken, like the Personnel Policy Manual. That's a fairly regimented document. Other actions have not had that title, so I can't say it's the definition, but it means something more than just a statement.
Excuse me, Andrew, so would, I think, in my opinion, by putting it this way, that a pledge or any action that you would decide to take in the future would indeed be a policy that you're adopting. So that's the way I mean it.
Is there a second to the motion?
It doesn't have to be an ordinance.
Is there a second to...
It does. I guess to me, and when I think of a policy, I think of something that, you know, if you violate that policy, there will be repercussions. And I guess I was looking at something that didn't necessarily have that feeling of enforcement behind it, that some of us share the concerns, that how would we do that?
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? All right, the motion dies.
I want to second it. I mean, but I need to feel that we've got flexibility, and we're opening the door more for discussion and to find out what our options are.
All right, I have a motion and a second for, not quite clear of a motion, but I'll call for a roll call.
Can we get a rereading of the motion, Mayor?
I'm not really sure what it is now.
I move to place consideration of a nondiscrimination policy on a future council agenda.
All right. It's policy. Are you still seconding that?
All right, I will...
Amended. I don't know another word.
Amended.
I'll move to amend it.
Just one motion dies for lack of a second.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
But I did kind of quasi-second it, so I...
Are you withdrawing your second?
All right, I will withdraw my second. Okay, I move to approve putting the discussion of a nondiscrimination policy...
Pledge.
Yes, a pledge.
Mayor? Kathy? How about if I said, I move to place consideration of a nondiscrimination policy or plan on a future council agenda?
Second.
Plan? She said plan.
Plan.
All right, there's a motion and a second.
Mayor, if I may, discussion. Certainly listened to everything that everybody had to say tonight, and I will comment, because I think this does cover the motion. And certainly listened to all the council members up here, too. Councilmember Leger speaking very eloquently, and Councilmember Dickey speaking very passionately, and certainly have heard what everybody has said tonight, and appreciate coming out and filling our council chambers. It's very lonely in here sometimes, so thank you for coming out. I share some of the same concerns that have been made up here about the enforcement, certainly the costs, what this is going to look like. We've got three major cities, I think the largest cities in Arizona, Flagstaff, Tucson, and Phoenix, maybe Flagstaff's not, I think maybe Mesa is now, but three of the largest cities, and then one of the largest, as far as population, I think, in Tempe, that have passed this nondiscrimination ordinance. And I haven't seen enough yet to see what that effect is going to be, and what that would be as far as the town is concerned, and what the town would be responsible for When this was brought up to me first, I was kind of surprised. I said, is it really? There's a problem in town as far as discrimination within our businesses? We see our businesses closing left and right. And we talk about bringing people into town to shop and to do business, and in the summer months, you know, you don't have to wait in line around here if you stay around here during the summer. So I was kind of surprised, and it felt to me like it was a solution in search of a problem. And I know that that's, it's not that simple, and I understand, and I won't pretend to understand because I'm straight, and I haven't been discriminated against, at least as far as I know, based on my sexual orientation. At least, I don't think so. I've been turned down on a lot on dates and stuff like that, but that's another story. I don't know that we're ready for a nondiscrimination ordinance. I do believe, though, that some type of unity pledge or proclamation, baby steps for the town, I mean, not get everything you want, would be appropriate, because I don't want folks walking away tonight, and this to be reported, that, well, the town is not open for business if you're lesbian, gay, bisexual, transsexual, because that's just not the case. And that's not how I think any of us up here feel. So, well, maybe I shouldn't speak for everybody. But so with that, I would amend the motion and request that it be placed on a future agenda for discussion regarding a unity pledge or some type of proclamation regarding this issue.
Second.
Thank you.
And now we have...
We have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, discussion on the amendment?
So what I said was seconded, but now it's being amended, but it's totally different. Right?
Yes.
Using the word pledge.
So, I've got a... Mayor, sorry. So basically, not even saying a plan, you want to just say it has to be a proclamation? Is that, so a plan is too strong?
A proclamation would be a plan. I mean, any kind of action would be a plan of action. So, I mean, I thought plan left it fairly open.
Yeah, so did I.
Nobody's looking at me. My motion.
I'm waiting. Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Now, we have the first...
Well, Mayor, I think my motion was amended to say, to pass a proclamation.
You didn't really second. You were...
Or a pledge.
Did you second?
I seconded the addition of plan.
Okay, so we still have the first one?
You put on the amendments first, and then back to the motion.
All right, I have a...
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what exactly I have to say.
Well, I have a question. If I vote yes on the amendment, I don't want the main motion to necessarily go away, so I have to vote no on the amendment?
A vote yes on the amendment would amend it to be a proclamation, as Councilmember Elke has moved. A vote no would take us back to the original main motion. That was Councilmember Dickey's motion, seconded by Councilmember Hanson.
Okay.
But if the amendment, sorry, if the amendment passes, then there's no main motion anymore.
Correct. The main motion is then amended by that amendment.
Okay.
And just to clarify, your amendment is for a proclamation. Is there enforcement involved in this, or is this just a statement? I'm not quite clear on it.
It was meant to be something similar to what I heard about Scottsdale doing a unity pledge or a proclamation regarding the town of Fountain Hills as a whole on this issue.
Well, I don't know what Scottsdale said, so I don't really, that's kind of not clear to me what Scottsdale said. All right, well, let's go with a roll call vote on the amendment then first.
Councilmember Yates?
Nay.
Councilmember Leger?
Please clarify what we're voting on.
The amendment.
It's the amendment by Councilmember Elke.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I just wanted clarity. It's important to know what you're voting on. And obviously, this discussion hasn't been that crystal clear. Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dickey?
Nay.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Five to two, nays.
Okay, now we are going to vote on the original amendment?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make an amendment to the original motion.
Why not?
And I would, well, I'm listening to what I'm hearing here, and I'm listening to what I'm hearing there, and I'm trying to come up with something that perhaps can work, which would be utilizing the language, a nondiscrimination policy, pledge, or statement. So that is my motion. Because there seems to be some confusion about if you're doing a pledge, you can't have a policy. If you're doing a policy, you can't have a pledge, so forth and so on. So I'm simply trying to take what I heard Councilman Elke say, what I heard Councilwoman Dickey say, what I heard Councilwoman Hanson say, and just basically say, to move forward a discussion that would incorporate and give the options of an ordinance, pledge, or statement. And the reason why I'm clarifying that is I don't want, if we go here, people coming back expecting, you know, an ordinance. It may be an ordinance, it may be a pledge, it may be a statement. It gives us the latitude. It also gives, I think, all of us the latitude to actually drill down and research the policies that are out there, and look at the possibility and probability of implementing. And I would invite each and every one of you to do that as well. I've had a lot of people in town talk to me about this, and I don't think they understood the complexity. This is a complex issue.
This is a complex issue. It's a very complex issue. So that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, just got, my only question to that is, since we already have one for the town, as you read, is this one that we are talking about, that we're going to be implementing, that's going to have consequences for the rest of the town, so that we are going to have to enforce? Or is, I mean, are we just repeating what we already have? So I'm really unclear. If we already have one for the town, so is this, are you suggesting one that we're doing now for the rest of the town, that's going to include the business community and everybody else, and then who's going to enforce it? Is that what...
It doesn't necessarily include enforcement.
We don't know, Mayor.
We don't know that.
If you're asking me a question, I'm...
I'm asking to clarify, yeah, if you could clarify...
I think it provides the options for us to talk about an ordinance, and ordinances are subject to enforcement. It provides us the option to talk about a pledge, which is not subject to enforcement. It talks about us making a statement, which is not subject to enforcement. It provides an opportunity for us to leverage the statement we already have, which is, in fact, an ordinance that is enforced, well, it's a town policy which is enforced, and there's consequences. Does that answer your question?
Well, so, just to clarify, it's, it seems like it's similar to what we have right now in the town policy, what you're proposing, but it would be enforceable for the rest of the town.
If we decide we want to have an ordinance, then that, an ordinance is, by nature, is enforceable for the entire town. For instance, we have a sign ordinance. That's an ordinance. A pledge or a policy typically does not get in the realm of enforcement.
Mayor, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but what Henry read from is our employment ordinance, I mean, policy, right? I mean, it's saying that we won't discriminate on who we hire. Isn't that correct?
Ma'am, Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. It's the town's policy for dealing with human resources, whether it's hiring, firing, retaining, treatment of employees who are on board.
Well, thank you. So that actual policy is good for what it does, but it has nothing to do with public accommodations and transportation and these other items that we're talking about. So, but Mayor, allow me to appreciate what Councilman Leger is doing, which is, I think, keeping it open. You don't know what will be presented to you. You obviously have a ton of input into what will be presented to you, and it gives you the opportunity to get something that will either answer the questions and make it acceptable, or it won't. But at least it gives us, you, the opportunity to look at it in a thorough way. So it opens it up, but it doesn't force you into doing it, because you don't really know what it'll look like yet.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second, and I have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Nay.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Mayor, five to two. Ayes, habit.
Thank you. All right, summary of council requests and report on recent activities. Does anyone have anything they want to report on? Ken, do you have anything else?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, can I, oh, before we go on a motion to adjourn, we had a resident who requested that on a future agenda, we give an update from our lawsuits with Epcor, and also an investigation on smart meters. I guess there's a lot of talk about that. I got several emails, so can we pass that along to staff? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
Any votes? We're adjourned.